Hello. I can't hear you.
Oh, how about now? How are you?
I got you. Doing well. How are you?
Okay, uh, we may have a couple more. There should be a couple more people, but I moved it, but let's give them just a quick minute and then we'll just start it, okay?
Yeah, when I look back for the invitation, I saw that I accepted an invitation for the interview with Trish Nash on Thursday.
Well, that doesn't work. I sent the wrong one out.
That's no problem. No problem.
Your day been going?
You know, it's been kind of busy lately.
I can imagine.
But it's all good. I'm a, a real estate attorney in my real life and it's, it's a, it's a busy business right now.
Yes, it is. And that's some of the stuff we're gonna talk about. Well, I'm gonna tell you what, I, I value your time. I did move this. I expect a couple people to jump on.
Okay.
But, uh, I'm gonna kind of start off. You may have to reintroduce yourself when they come on if we have enough people, but, uh, tell me, just, we're gonna start off by, uh, I'm gonna start off with saying again, Brian Harris, I appreciate you coming on this call. I have a group. The group is called the Independent Black Voters on Facebook. We're nonpartisan, which means that we don't look respectively on who, uh, what party you are with. We look at what's, let me see, admit, okay. Let me see something. Admit. Uh, Jamin, did you just come on and Stephanie?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. I see Stephanie. So I, I was just getting started. We'll have a few more people come on, I believe. I wanted to take, uh, uh, thanks Steve for coming on. Uh, I was just beginning to explain to them. The Independent Black Voters was created here about five years ago or so. And the whole concept was, uh, we were tired of partisan politics where we were tired of one group that seems to ignore our community and the other one that makes promises to our community without seeing true change. Many times the things that the independent black voter are looking for, we're looking for social justice and we're looking for equality of opportunity and we look at economics equality. Uh, and while we focus on our community, everything we discuss is probably prevalent in every community. So we take the time to find out from that perspective because we are focusing on what's going on in the black community. But we've also had some allegiances now with the Hispanic community. We're looking for people nonpartisan who think the same way, whether they're white, whether they're green, purple, whatever. Uh, the whole issues we find out is the bulk of what we talking about are very similar. It's just certain issues that are completely prevalent to our group or some other groups. So I thank you for taking the time to get on here and talk to us, Steve, because I live in Henderson. And actually, Jamin, who just came on, he, he lives in Henderson and he has a group called, uh, Black Henderson. Uh, our goal is to be more of a voice in our community on what we want to see because we want to see growth of the black community in Henderson where it seems like we're headed in the wrong direction. So without any further ado, Steve, uh, can you, well, I'm gonna ask Jamin and I'm asking Stephanie, uh, to introduce themselves real quick. And then Steve, I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about where you're running for city council. Is the city, is, yeah, city council you're running for or is it mayor? I can't remember.
Oh, city council.
Okay, okay.
Hi Steve, I'm Stephanie. I'm a travel agent. Love to help people get to their destination, group, groups, personal, business, whatever. So we're excited to hear what you have to say, young man.
Excellent. Good to meet you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Hey, how you doing, Steve? I'm Jamin Willis. I am a real estate agent and property manager. Um, I also run a group called Black Henderson and what Black Henderson does is we focus on, uh, commerce, entrepreneurship, providing entrepreneurship opportunities in the city of Henderson and also community, uh, provided for the needs in the community, whether that's politics, daycare, education, um, and things like that. So I'm interested in hearing about, uh, what you have to offer and what you have, your platform to help provide for the needs for the people in the city of Henderson.
Excellent. Thank you, Jamin. Um, well, let me tell you, my, my background is I'm, uh, I was born here, born in Ellis Air Force Base, grew up in town. Uh, went to Shepperell High School and UNLV and graduated from UNLV a very long time ago and moved to LA to go to UCLA Law School. And I, I worked in LA for four years and then came back here in nineteen eighty-nine and have been here ever since as a practicing attorney. I'm a real estate attorney, um, business attorney and have been doing that for the last thirty years here. I've done an awful lot of work in the city of Henderson and that's how I've gotten to know the members of the city council and the city staff. I have the greatest respect for this city council before I ever considered doing this. Um, you know, I, I told anybody who would listen that I thought this was a bright shining moment in the city of Henderson that real good could be accomplished because these are good people who want to do the right thing. Um, and I believe that very much. I never intended to do anything like this. This is not, you know, on my bucket list. I never intended to have a political career. This is way outside, um, what I normally do, way outside my comfort zone, actually. But, um, the mayor and Dan Shaw came to me about a little over a year ago and asked if I would consider doing this if John Mars retired, they said. Retired early, would you consider applying for that position? Because I think we have the votes to put you on the city council. And even at that, I said, I don't think so, but I'll think about it. And, uh, eventually I said, yeah, I, I would do that. And then John Mars obviously is not going to retire. He's going to be there until the end of his term. So I called back, uh, Councilman Shaw and I said, you know, this is just not gonna happen. I need to focus on other things and thank you for thinking of me. And he said, uh, well, I think you're right. So would you run? And I mean, it, it, it took me a while. I, I thought about it seriously. I said, no, um, originally, but let me, I mean, I've, I've had, I, we lived in the city for the last twenty-five years. Um, I've raised two daughters here. They went to Green Valley High School. They were involved in the Parks and Rec program. This has been a great place to raise my family. And I, I'm in a place in my career where I can, I can pick and choose what projects I want to work on. And if there's something that is important to me, like the city, should I be elected? Um, I've got the time to do that. And I've got now the support of the mayor and, uh, three out of the four on the city council, Michelle Romero is running for mayor. And so she's not endorsing anybody, but everybody else has endorsed me. And so I've got that support. I think I've got the experience and the knowledge from what I've done for the last thirty years to bring real value to the council. And it's an opportunity for me to give back to a city that's been very good to me and my family. Um, and I think I can, I think I can do some good. And that's the only reason that I'm doing this. I don't, I don't need, uh, improve my resume. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to build a second career here. Um, I just think I can, I can be of value and I can serve the people of the city of Henderson. So that's what I'm all about. Um, I'm very much in favor of economic opportunity and creating opportunity and creating opportunity for everyone. Um, I mean, one of the, it's, it's an interesting ward that I'm, I'm running in because we have Lake Las Vegas and we have good portions of, uh, Green Valley. But we also have Pittman, you know, a community along Boulder Highway that's, has been kind of forgotten, um, an older community. A probably a middle class or lower middle class community that, and I want to make sure that as we look out for West Henderson and the growth that continues to happen there and all the new opportunities that are happening there that we don't forget areas of the city that, um, might not have been so advantaged, uh, in recent years. And so that, that will be, uh, a significant part of my focus. But overall, I think, um, you know, it's just, the city of Henderson has been a wonderful place for me and my family. I want to make sure that we continue on the path that we've been on. Uh, I want to make sure that we serve everyone and I think I can, I think I can be a great deal of help in doing that. So that's what I'm about. So, and I want to thank you for, I don't, I don't want this to come across the wrong way, but I mean, I've been out talking to a lot of people for the last more than a year. Every group that asked me to come meet with them, to speak with them, um, I've been there. And this is the first opportunity that I've had to discuss these issues with black business leaders. And so what's, what's important to me is that I'm available to listen and I have the, the people that I can talk to, um, that can share viewpoints with me that I'm not otherwise exposed to, that I might not think of, um, because, you know, we're all in this together. And so, you know, when, when, uh, when you all reached out to me, I was very, I was very happy about it because whether you endorse me or not, I hope you do. But if you, whether, either way, um, I want to be able to talk and I want to be able to have the advantage of having, uh, your input and your knowledge and your life experience so that it can be a better council.
Well, first of all, great. And we thank you, Steve, for taking the time to, uh, get on this call and listen to us a little bit and us get a chance to know you. Now, if I'm correct, uh, the city council is nonpartisan, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I thought there.
Buddy, you know, I'm, I'm running for the open seat in Ward Three because John Mars has decided not to run again. But even Ward Three, everybody in the city votes and the primary is in June and everybody votes in the primaries. It's not like a Democrat primary and Republican primary. Everybody votes. It's nonpartisan. And if you get fifty percent plus one, it's all over. And if nobody gets fifty percent plus one, then the top two go on to November.
Exactly. And that's what a lot of people don't realize is the importance of the primaries. Because many times the decisions are made at the primary and if you're waiting for the general election, well, the, the horse is out, the, the barn and running wild and you never got a chance to at least, uh, make a difference or make your voice be heard. So that's one of the reasons we're trying to get out is to educate and form, uh, the people and also to have a better understanding of the community. So I thank you very much, uh, for taking the time to listen to us.
You're absolutely right. I mean, I think supported anytime is appreciated, but I can tell you from personal experience that those who want to get involved earlier in the process, um, you know, that, that is, it's greatly appreciated.
Yep.
So I, I agree.
Yeah. So, uh, Jamin and Stephanie, jump in with any questions. I want to say, we are not your usual, uh, vetting process where we have standard questions we ask. We go by your answers and we ask you, please don't give us canned answers. Please don't give us the answers you think we want to hear. Understand, there are certain issues we want to talk about and we're gonna press you to be open and honest and speak what, what, what you believe so that we can get a better understanding of who you are.
Yep. No, absolutely.
Okay. So I, I'm gonna start off and asking you, uh, can you give us an overview of the positions, the city council? What do they really do? And what do you think are the top three, uh, issues or the, the, the top three issues that the city council you think focuses on?
Well, I mean, the, the, the city council is the, the governing body for the city. So anything of great significance, um, requiring a decision by the city is either made by the city manager or the city council. So the ultimate decision-making authority in the city is the city council. Probably seventy-five percent of what the city council does is related to land use, um, and, you know, zoning and then, um, projects and all the kind of stuff that I've been doing for the last thirty years. Um, the remainder, you know, the, the council is very important in attracting new opportunities and new business to the city and creating, um, the types of partnerships with, with private business that go along with creating opportunities where none might exist otherwise. So that's very important. Um, and, you know, the, the city's responsible for keeping the lights on and the water flowing. So, um, you know, just professional competent management of basic city functions is extremely important. And the city council is not involved in day-to-day decisions, but they are involved through the city manager's office of making policy decisions that affect all those things, you know, having to do with water and having to do with how does infrastructure get supplied to West Henderson as it grows? And how do we pay for that? And should we be paying for that? All those types of issues are coming before the city council. And, you know, one of the things that has made the city such a great place to live is that it's, you know, one of the safest cities in the country um, that we have, um, life safety services and the fire department that are second to none. Um, and that's all a function of the support, I think, that those organizations receive from the city council. Um, and the contracts that we have in place with those organizations and, and them knowing that, that, that they have the support, that, that the city council has their back, that the city has their back and, and is supportive of those services, I think is critically important. So, I mean, it is the policymaking body and the ultimate decision maker for, for, uh, the major decisions in the city. And so it's extremely important.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Uh, so if you were, if you look at it, give me what, you, you kind of land uses obviously, but I want to break down. What do you think are the, the biggest, the three biggest issues that are facing, uh, Henderson at this time?
I think water is going to be, um, a very large issue in our near and long-term future. You know, I think there are decisions that have to be made in terms of, um, water use and in terms of what type of development or, you know, is permitted. And what type of, you know, there, there's now, there's a, a, a big discussion about whether it's appropriate to cool industrial buildings with evaporative cooling that uses water to cool rather than mechanical air conditioning. Those, those types, that, that I think water and how we adjust to the new water, uh, reality is going to be extremely important. I think, uh, you know, growth and what, uh, the impact that growth has both in terms of the positive impact it has on creating jobs and opportunity, uh, and housing, um, weighed against the, the negatives of traffic and the burdens that, uh, the growth places on, um, city services and how to pay the, for those city services is, has been and will continue to be a very important, uh, issue for the city going forward. Um, I think education, education is a big issue for the entire county. And to be honest with you, I mean, I, I, I don't have, I, I don't have a solution. Um, I know that since I've been here and thinking about the issue, I maybe since high school, um, I've always thought, well, you know, thank God that there's a Mississippi because we're not last, or thank God that there's a Guam because we're not last in the country in, in some category of education. And since I've been old enough to realize that that was an issue, nothing has changed. And here we are in two thousand twenty-two and I'm a sixty-something year old man and nothing has changed in our, in our, the quality of education here in the county. So I think that is a, a critical issue. I know that there, I think, I think Michelle is supporting this idea of creating our own school district and Dan Stewart, I know, is pushing it. I don't know that that's the right answer. Um, but I know a good deal of thought and energy, uh, has to be devoted to finding a better solution than, than what we've seen so far. So I think, I think those are big issues. I think, um, maybe doing, uh, just throwing out, maybe doing a better job of creating the types of projects that the city has been involved in in the past, um, would be an excellent, uh, change and would help the city makes, make better use of its resources. I think, you know, some of the things that have been done in the recent past, um, probably should have been structured differently. Uh, and if I had been on the city council, I think I could have helped do that, uh, quite a bit. So I think, I think those are my priorities. I, you know, continuing our quality of life in the city with our excellent Parks and Rec Department, with the, the, the public safety services that we have. I think those are very important, but I, you know, I don't know that there's a big issue there or something that needs to be fixed. This is something that we always have to keep in mind and make sure that, that we continue on the path that we've been on. So this is a good place for families.
Okay, great. So I asked you top, top three, so I could see where you fit in and some of the issues that, uh, we want to discuss here. And I agree, water is gonna be an issue fundamentally across the board and obviously growth is always something to talk about. So I'd look at those in education. Again, that's, that's an issue we've been fighting forever and it, there's, if there was a quick fix for someone would have found it out. But I'm gonna go down and take a step back and ask you, um, here's some things. Henderson, I've been here since, uh, we moved here as a family, uh, almost twenty years ago. And, uh, it's, it's a, it's a great overall city to live in, but obviously if you are a minority, specifically a black person, there are concerns that directly relate to what we're seeing here. And basically, if you're a person, period, uh, we're fortunate. I looked at the stats. Henderson has an average, uh, I think the average, uh, income is seventy-four thousand dollars, which is much higher than most areas. But also you look around, our housing medium index is around four hundred thousand. So even if you're, uh, at the medium, it's very hard for the average person to buy and maintain a home in, uh, Henderson. So, you know, as we grow, you know, there's a belief that there's, that, that the city of Henderson should not be the city just for the rich. It'd be, it should be a city that is accommodating for the middle class and even for those who don't have, who want to move themselves up economically in the future. And let's face it, there should be a place there, uh, through gesture, gentrification, through, uh, obviously this meteoric rise in housing values. The average person is being locked out specifically the black community. Uh, I think now we're probably six to seven percent of the populace in Henderson where we're probably closer to ten to eleven percent across the board in Nevada. And much of that decline is based on economics. Uh, but it's, there are many keys, both of opportunities of economics and the cities are very important in creating economic opportunities for everyone. But disproportionately, I think, without even pulling the numbers, black businesses are not getting a fair opportunity in Henderson, uh, for growth opportunities that may be through the city, that may be through, uh, county work, city works, through federal or even, uh, others. When you look at just the opportunities, many times they're going to the same old people. And when you look at the people that are being utilized, they don't look like me. And that locks out the opportunity to have more people that look like me live in the city, which we were looking to see an increase of, of, of African, American, American families that move in here. How do we basically, and this is long-winded, but what is your thing? How do we become more inclusive in opportunities as this growth happens? Uh, to make sure that there's a diverse, uh, diverse opportunities of people, uh, specifically who look like me to have the opportunities to get into the bidding process, to go in and make sure that more people look like me are working and hired. And, uh, even into the government, running of the government right now, if you look at what's going on and I talked to one candidate and a good example was the fire department and the police department as far as their overall utilization of, uh, black people having opportunities there. What's your thought there? That's a long question. So I'll sit back and let you answer and give me your thoughts.
That's a, that's a, a difficult and very important question. I have, first to, to talk about the, the affordable housing issue. Yeah, I mean, I've got two young daughters who are both, one of them just bought a home, um, but only because we were able to allow her to, to live with us for several years while she and her husband saved money. Um, and my other daughter is in graduate school and I, I think by the, you know, things continue as they are. I don't know how that she ever affords to buy a home. She wants to be a veterinarian. Veterinarians don't make a whole ton of money and she's just quickly being outpaced by what's going on in the real estate market. I, I just, I don't know how a young person starting out today or someone who's trying to move up on the economic ladder today, um, ever gets on that merry-go-round. Uh, I mean, once you're in and your home is appreciating like everybody else's, you know, all is good. But how you ever get on that without some assistance, I, I just don't know. Um, so, you know, I, I am a supporter of, I've talked to, I've got, some developers that I have talked to that have projects that are a combination of market rate, affordable housing, uh, and workforce housing, all in the same development project. I think that's a fantastic idea and I would be all in favor of supporting that types of development whenever the city can afford, can support that type of bill. And I think that is, that is an answer. Um, as far as affordable housing, um, you know, building equity in something that you own. I mean, I think that is part of, it's an important part of the American dream and I, I think that has to be, we have to figure out a way so that we don't have a whole generation of folks who, who just can never see their way to jumping on that, you know, obtaining that American dream. And I, you know, got the support of the home builders and I had the opportunity to talk to them and I've got, I think I've got some ears that matter. Uh, and I have started that conversation with them because they've been, there, there's been a revision of the Henderson Development Code in a way that makes a lot of what they do more expensive. Um, and, you know, their response to me is, you know, just when, when the city comes back to us and says, we need more affordable housing. We're gonna say, well, you just made everything we do more expensive. So you can't have it both ways. But I, I keep asking them every time I have an opportunity, I ask them, so how are we gonna solve this problem? What are you doing? Are you talking to the city? What is the discussion? How are we gonna get from here to there? And there's nothing going on. So one things that I'm going to do as soon as I'm on the city council is start that discussion. You know, there are things that, that, uh, you know, that can be done that have been done in other places. There is inclusionary zoning that says, you know, if you're building a project and you're getting entitlements for a hundred homes, well, we need ten of them, um, to be affordable. You know, that, that's, you know, that's something that can't be examined. There's a, a public land trust where, where property that the city might own is made available for development, but on conditions for, uh, pricing that, you know, if, if I'm buying a house and I'm somebody who needs to be, um, supported to buy a house, well, I can buy it at a more affordable price. And then the city shares in that appreciation so that when I sell it, the city gets back a portion of that purchase price, a portion of that appreciation that goes back in the trust and that can, who's, uh, I'm sorry, I'm getting another call that I, I had to, let's see. Uh, end and accept, no, hold and accept. How do I do this? Uh, I don't want to end. I want to hold and accept. Geez. Okay, I don't know what, I don't, um, so, and I think, so I think that, and actually the county is considering doing that public land trust um, and has reached out to my law firm to see if we could help with that. So we're, we're looking at, at how that works and how it's been done in other communities. But I think there are things that can be done and the, right now is everyone recognizes a problem, but nobody is working on a solution.
And can I, can I jump in here? Cause I, I love where you're going, but I'll, I like to give people a little answer because nobody seems to want to talk about this issue.
Yeah.
In the last, and I pulled up the data, eighteen to twenty percent of all the products that are being sold are sold to investors. Investors are, are, are driving up the price of housing. If, if, if you have eighteen percent being bought by investors, then there is a false supply and demand. They're buying up this, all of the supply, creating a false demand, driving up the product. In the last two years, housing has gone up twenty-seven percent, which is unreasonable. American dream was designed on the philosophy of people buying their homes, paying them off, creating generational wealth for their, for their, for their offsprings. But that is not happening now because we're treating the, uh, the, the small business as a commodity. Because investors are even, they're coming in literally buying subdivisions and holding them hostage until they get the prices that they want. We need to, starting at the local level, going up to the state level and the federal level to drive out these investors. Now, I got Jamin on here who obviously is in real estate. I have you who is in real estate. I have many of the politicians I talk to, they always give me a similar answer about land uses and they give me another one. But the truth of the matter, the problem we have right now, it's a greed problem in which right now, big business has no other place to put their money that they figure is as safe as buying homes and then driving up the pro, cost of renting. So now, I agree, I laugh because the American dream is to have an affordable rental, not to have an affordable house that appreciates at a regular basis so that they're able to create generation wealth. So I, I was a lot in there, but I had to come in and, and I tell this to everyone. Do you agree with this? And are you willing to fight to help actually stabilize the housing community by driving out the investors?
I absolutely agree with that. And I remember reading the book, I think it was called The Big Short, on the last crash. And the guy who bet on the other side of the housing boom, got the idea from going into a bar here in Las Vegas and talking to the bartender and the bartender was upset because he had two vacancies in the five houses that he owned. And he thought, man, there's something wrong with this market. I need, and that's how the whole, you know, he, he put together the bet on that the market, market And he thought, man, there's something wrong with this market. I need, and that's how the whole, you know, he, he put together the bet on that the mar market would crash and made billions. But it was, and now I think you're absolutely right. It's not that bartender who owns five houses, it's the institution. It's the Black Rock and the Blackstone and all the rest of them that are coming in and buying hundreds of homes at a time and pricing everybody else out of the market. And the other thing is um there are these large developers of for rent, single-family homes. Um, and so they are able to pay more for residential land than a normal home bu- builder can because they have a for rent product and they can justify a higher land price. And that's creating an artificial inflation too. So I am a hundred and ten percent supportive of what you're saying and figuring out a way that we can make sure that housing is available for people who wanna buy a home and live in it and create that generational wealth and prevent these, the institutions and the large developers of for rent product um from driving up the price for everybody else. I'm, I couldn't agree more with that.
Great, great, great. Uh, Jermaine, give me your opinion, cause you.
One thing I feel really strongly about too is the, and I don't know how you all feel about it, but the short-term rental. Uh, you know, people who buy and then make their house into a hotel. I am, I am a, a large opponent of that. Um, and I, you know, I think it's in, it's inconsistent with the residential community. And I think, you know, I, I think that also is adding to the um unnatural inflation in house prices. So that's something else, I think. I think the city has done a good job in in uh in regulating that, but I would be a, I would, I would continue a strong opposition to making that any more accessible than it is right now.
So I have a couple uh uh input on that. Well, I'm originally from Ohio and things are a little bit different in Ohio. In Ohio, we had a thing where we had a tax abatement for homeowners. But here the taxes are so low, it's not comparable to other states. But I think that if you, like you talked about Patterson area um or areas that need development, if the city could come up with some type of grants or opportunities that makes it a little bit more affordable for the the median income person looking to purchase a home in the city of Henderson. I think that that would be uh advantageous or a great idea. I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, it's a great need, but I don't have a one hundred percent uh answer or solution for myself. But if we could come up with something in terms of some type of grant or, you know, something like that, I don't really see a lot of things except for, you know, a, a, a welcome home or, you know, home is possible or something like that, other than that. Um, and that, that has implications though, interest rates being higher if you take advantage of those programs. Um, but yeah, at these prices, it's great if you own a home. But you know, as we see greater and greater appreciation, um, you know, gonna be looking like the new Southern California here in a little bit.
And you keep thinking that it's gonna adjust. I mean, the last time that the, I've been crazy like this, the mark, the bottom dropped out of the market. And then, you know, all of a sudden, everything was affordable again.
And there, it's not happening because uh, because corporations can hold. They, they have the kind of money, they're paying cash for it, they can hold.
Right. Yeah, and what, what they're likely to do is if the market does turn, they're gonna dump everything. And then all, all this appreciation equity is just gonna go away.
Exactly.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. I, I think there's a lot of it that is, people from other places are now finding this to be a very attractive community. But I think you're absolutely right that a good portion of it is coming in from uh institutional buyers of property for investment.
Absolutely. So again, that's one of the commitments. And again, this is not just an independent black voter issue. This is an issue across the board for any young person, old person, et cetera, that housing is getting to, to get so ridiculous, it's pricing everybody out of the market. And so we definitely have to get a solution there.
I agree.
Let me go to the, the, I'll continue, cause I, again, I jumped in because I wanted to get to that one. Uh, diversity, equity of opportunity, uh, and and I'll start off. Uh, if you look at what's going on, uh, and I'm looking at the police force, I'm looking at the fire uh, uh, force. These are million-dollar jobs now. They are literally million-dollar jobs. Yet, when you look at from a perspective of diversity, a lot of people wanna call the word diversity because then you don't peel back the onion. If you look at the participation of folks who look like me, it's dismal. Uh, and a lot of, not just the fire, but probably in all of the government where there are really a low amount of of persons participating. Back in the past, when I was growing up, you wanted to be in corporate America, cause that's where you got paid. Now you wanna be in government because that's where you get paid and you get the best benefits. How do you go out about seriously investing into real diversity, which includes myself? People who look like me, I'm saying, uh, to make sure that this city is friendly and inclusive to all. And I'm talking about the Hispanic community and I'm talking about the white community, but I'm talking about the communities that are unrepresented or underrepresented right now in city government.
Well, I think, I think it's important for your son and your daughter to look at those jobs and look at the fire department and look at the police department and see people who look like them. I think that's extremely important. And I, I don't, to be honest with you, it's a question that I should have asked because I've talked to the fire, the firefighters. Um, and I've talked informally with the police and I haven't, I don't know what the situation is with any kind of um consideration of minority status in, in terms of hiring. But I, you know, I, I think I think it's important. I mean, I, I think that those jobs, those public jobs need to reflect the community. Um, and if that requires that there be some preference given in, in the consideration of applicants, then that's what it requires, but I, I think that's, I think that's important. Um, and I, you know, I have no issue with, with women-owned and minority-owned business programs. I think that's, that is important as well. I mean, I had, I had two different experiences when I went to law school. Um, I had at UCLA, forty percent of the student body was there on some type of alternative admissions program, uh, either because of background or because of race or because of economic status or some. And so I had that experience at UCLA. And then I went back and got a tax degree at University of San Diego, which is a, a private school and had no such programs. And I got, you know, there, there were life experiences that were shared at, at, in the UCLA program that just didn't exist in the San Diego program. My, my San Diego school, my classes, every single one of them, everybody looked like me. Um, and at UCLA, I had a class that looked like when I went out into the city after school, they looked just like my class, you know, and I, I, so, yeah. I mean, I think that's critically important. I think it's, like I say, I think it's important for kids growing up to look at those jobs and look at those people, look at those people in government uh and and see a reflection of themselves.
I agree with you and I, I'm gonna make this statement. Unless the city council is serious about diversity, diversity, diversity and inclusion and not just talking about it. And I'm talking about real diversity and inclusion that includes us because many times diversity and inclusion is loop, is used very loosely uh in, in their definition, then you will never see it happen.
So you think that's not the case now?
Absolutely. And and I'm gonna give you, uh, and I, I'm actually gonna take a step back. One of the things that I really look at is systemic racism. A lot of people do, they look at racism, oh, he called me this, he called me that. Systemic racism is about economics and it's about uh the quality of opportunity. And many times systemic racism is putting in barriers of entry. Even if it be uh the opportunities in the marijuana industry, there were barriers that were put in that systemically kept the majority of black people from the opportunities as they became legal versus the fact that they were incarcerated as becau- as it was illegal. So once it became legal, the rules were designed to look fair, but to actually exclude. And I'm gonna use the fire department as one. Uh, we know, people who look like me know that there have been rules of engagement, rules of qualification that are put in place so that uh certain people who apply will not meet that criteria, so they'll be put to the back of the bus. But everybody says it's transparency and all, everybody has an equal chance. And I'll give you, because I know a little bit about the fire department, right now, uh, some have put in requirements that you have to have, uh, what is it, where you uh, oh, the medical, where you uh worked in, uh, I'm trying to think of, uh, like ambulance.
No, like, huh? Paramedic, emergency medicine.
Yeah, you have to have a criteria there to be on the fire department. Well, when it was not a million-dollar job, that was not a requirement. Uh, but now they put that in, they may put on the fact that they give experience to people who have experience. And if you're living in a rural area and there's a volunteer fire department, it's set up so you can get your experience through that volunteer fire department and you're put to the front of the line. Uh, veterans are put to the front of the line. Uh, many times the criteria is set, so it is made to be a peer to be fair and equal. But when the points are done, and then if the people who are making the decisions don't look like you, then you look up and that's why you have a small amount of people that make it as police, make it as fire people. And even in the basic government wor- works, it has to be a significant com- commit, excuse me, commitment by our city council to say, we're going to look like our communities and and we're gonna exceed it on the smaller ones and make sure that we are really inclusive. And that's what we need, and that's one of the reasons we included the uh independent black voters into vetting and endorsing because we want candidates who really understand that a small, a strong community, a safe community is really prevalent on making sure that everyone has the opportunity to succeed.
Now, you, 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 I agree, and but you raised the marijuana. And I know, or at least I've been told that, that the mayor has not allowed any discussion of new licenses to move forward because she doesn't think that the state legislation requirement that applicants and licensees include a substantial portion of minority and women-owned businesses. And so until she sees that corrected, she's not allowing anything, anything new to move forward. Is that, I mean, uh, are you aware of that?
Uh, I'm glad you told me because I'm not aware of everything and that's a good start. Uh, as a matter of fact, I have to give some kudos there because that's what people have to basically make it a, make it a priority. Now, and and I'm gonna state this too, and I have to state this, that's why I talk about systemic racism a lot and what we talk about. We don't just want white males to put white females into their positions of theirs and then turn around and say, we have diversity. We have to make sure that our plans are not high-level diversity where people say, okay, I'll cheat the system this way, but I'll put it from what the left pocket to the right pocket and everybody else is still excluded. It's very important that that does not happen.
I understand. I understand. What is, and this might be a discussion for just a private lunch that you and I have, but what, what about the police department?
I'm, as a person who, as I said, I've been here twenty years, my sons have grown up here. I believe that the police station is, the police are headed in the right direction because when my sons were teenagers at Coronado, when they were at Green, uh, the junior high school, uh, not Green Valley, but it might have been Green Valley Ju- Junior High School, they were at Coronado. They used to get escorted back by the police for driving while black. Uh, as teenagers, I even evi- I even saw, sat there and watched the police pull them over for basically, cause my son had an old-school car and there was more than one black young man in the car. And it just so happened, I was sitting there at the stop and saw it all happen. So I believe that there is improving. And I think relationships with the police will, will improve when they understand that uh we want safe uh communities, but we don't wanna be overpleased. We don't wanna be walking while black, we don't wanna be driving while black. We don't wanna be this, this, you know, uh, pulled over, if I'm pulled over for a like, then I've got to, then you must be doing something wrong. So I think that they're headed in the right direction, but I think we have to work more on communicating both ways, especially to the police, that black people want secure, safe places. They just wanna be treated equally and not treated as a perp or criminal and then having to justify they're okay. Does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense. And I, I, you know, I, I'm not gonna use names or, but, but I, I had meetings with some of the, the police folks. And in, in two meetings, I think they told me four times that the police chief was black. It was really, it was weird. And then just, uh, just spontaneously with it, it didn't really fit into the conversation. They shared that, you know, there's no racism in Clark County. And I thought, uh, you know, I kicked myself afterwards to tell, to tell you the truth because I didn't challenge them on that and saying, you know, but it just, it, it was really uncomfortable. And I thought, man, I wonder, is this an indication that there's really, there are issues here? So, yeah, I mean, that, you don't have to comment on that, it's just something that, that really struck me is, you know, th- this is really uncomfortable that they're, they're talking to me like this.
Yeah. Yes, because President Obama became president did not mean that, that there was no racism in America. And I'll leave it that way.
That's true.
You know, the truth of the matter is, we are getting better, the more we are willing to openly discuss. I think the more we find out, we are more alike than different. And just because you put at the head of somebody who looks like me, if the rest of the body doesn't, then all you're doing is putting a nice face on, on the problem and say, now it's taken care of. Because no, we are headed in the right direction, but we have a long way to do. And a lot of it comes with making a defined uh choice to diversify your police forces and your fire forces so that people get to experience other people and start to realize we're all the same with the same desires. And then you start to maybe address some of the underlying problems that we see.
Yeah, I mean, that, uh, that's, that's so important. And I, I'm, I speak from my heart when I said, whether you endorse me or not, this is a dialogue. I, you know, you're, hopefully you'll be a resource if I'm, if I'm lucky enough to be on the city council. Um, this is a dialogue that I wanna make sure continues.
Uh, great, I'm gonna ask Jermaine to jump in and give me his opinions on something because we partnered, the Independent Black Voters specifically reached out to Jermaine's group, the uh, black, uh, black Henderson. Because again, I live there, I've joined his group, but I believe uh we have been voiceless in Henderson. And one of the things we wanna do is create positive dialogue, which will result in, in improved, uh, I'm gonna say relationships. And also hopefully it will drive more people that look like us to move to Henderson.
Yeah, so I would be interested in hearing if you already have some ideas in there or maybe if there's some, you know, some input or things that I could contribute. One of the issues that we have is it is a challenge for our small business owners to go from being a, a small business owner where you're just one person to scaling or growing a business to hire employees. We all know that uh Las Vegas and Henderson is a very uh entrepreneur, business-friendly um city. But when you think about small business, that could be five hundred employees, you know what I mean? So, uh, you know, you know, so those are some of the issues that we have is, um, like I said, coming from another state, uh, Las Vegas and Henderson is relatively a new city from a, you know, from a real estate standpoint, old as nineteen ninety out here and I'm nineteen hundred in Ohio. As far as, yeah, housing. So, you know, one of the issues that we have is a lot of entrepreneurs in the city of Henderson, especially my entrepreneurs that are part of my group, is we're looking for uh programs. We're looking for opportunities, we're looking for ways to expand our business. And, you know, going from being what we would consider a mom and pop, you know, one person, one-man gang um to really growing and scaling and hiring people. So, um, like I said before, I, it could be just for a lack of knowledge standpoint, but I don't really see a lot of uh programs or courses or uh small business development going on in the city of Henderson. Because I think that uh if you start to look at some of the things that we've done in the past and some of the things that we're planning to do this year, we really have a presence in the city of, of Henderson and we really make a difference in terms of, you know, economics of supporting uh businesses out here, our tax dollars and, and things like that. So, um, that's one of our greatest needs is, you know, to scale and provide further opportunities for our business owners in the city of Henderson. Do you have any, you know, ideas or something that you already had?
Jermaine, have you done anything with the? Jermaine, have you done anything with the Henderson Chamber?
You know, I just recently joined the Henderson Chamber of Commerce. Um, I did do that. So that's, you know, something new that we started.
Particularly just starting um, an incubator program um, for new businesses that are looking for, that need space and are looking for mentorship and, you know, how to, how to grow the business. So I know at least at the, you know, the, the private level, I know the Henderson Chamber is all about doing that and have programs in place to do that. So at the first place, I recommend anybody in that position start would be with the chamber because they have the, you know, th, that's one of their focuses. Um, so I would, I would recommend that. And then, you know, as far as what the city, I don't know what the city does, to be honest with you, what, what programs the city has. Um, but, you know, I can, I can certainly look into it and get back to you, but I would, and I can put you in touch with the right folks at the Henderson Chamber too.
Um, okay.
But yeah, because I, 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 I think there's some opportunities to do something there. And I, you know, I started, I started this uh, firm, um, you know, uh, in two thousand and four. And I, I know it was very, it was scary to do. Um, and didn't know how long it was gonna be until we had money coming in and didn't know, didn't know how to, you know, what do you have to do to make payroll and what do you do with ADP and what is ADP and how do it, you know, I mean, I, I know all those questions because we did it. Um, and I, I, you know, it's, it's a tough thing to start and I, I will, um, you know, send me your contact information. I'll get you in touch with the right folks at the chamber.
Um, okay. And my second thing uh, was, you know, a real, I think that it's a real issue. And I think it does a huge disservice from the city council meetings to school board be, meetings. A lot of the information, like the meetings that they have are right smack in the middle of the day where the average person that have a full-time job or they have kids can't make the meetings. So then they don't have the information and then they can't take advantage of whatever the, you know, the, the situation is or having a voice. You know, I was speaking to my wife about that, about like some of the, the school meetings. They're in the, like the worst times where people who work a full-time job can't even make it to the meeting.
You think, you think there's a reason for that? I mean, I mean, it's, it's the, you know, yeah, they know when they set the schedule, what that does to people, folks who want to attend. Um, and I, I mean, the, the, the city council meetings used to be in the evening. Um, and it got moved, I, just within the last year or two, and I think because of COVID and everything was online. Um, but now we're meeting in person, but they're continuing, you know, it's four o'clock and usually unless there's, there's an unusual agenda by, by the time that somebody who works a ninety-five job could get there, it's all over.
Exactly.
And, you know.
I think that that's something that should be brought up and, and I think that you have a huge backing because, I mean, a self-employed person like me, you know, a realtor can attain, but you know, somebody who gets off at, you know, six o'clock or, you know, something like that, or even, you know, it's not even a chance. So there may be a great opportunity for a person to have input or to know about something that's going on, but they don't even have the opportunity to come to the meeting to know about it. I think that's a huge issue.
Yeah. And every, every, I mean, the good thing is everything's now online. Um, so you can watch without being there, but still, starting at four o'clock doesn't really encourage public participation.
Absolutely. See, I, uh, first of all, I wanna thank both of y'all. We're getting close to an hour and I, I, I try to have my initial ones to an hour, but Steve, we're gonna have a a second call. We're gonna probably do an in-person, I'm gonna talk to Jermaine. We wanna get a location and actually have people in to do
Good.
a, a secondary in-person interviews. So, uh, but I wanna ask you again before we go, go away. Homelessness, obviously, uh, Vegas is the biggest, has the biggest issue, but homelessness. But we know the Henderson has the problem, it's just not discussed as much. But as gentrification continues, as the ru, rise of the cost of, of houses along with inflation and etcetera, uh, this is gonna get worse way before it gets better. Uh, we say this forty percent of the unimp, of the homeless are African-American. And while some of the issues are drug related, some of them are mental illness related, many of the problems are economic related because many of the people are now having to choose between keeping a roof over their head or putting feet food in their mouths. And many of the issues that are related to, to drugs are hopelessness. Many of them who are mental are the same way. It still goes back to economics. What is, what do you think is the city's role in basically being proactive to deal with the tsunami that's coming uh, to every city in America? But tell me what you think about Henderson's.
Well, you know, I, I support, there's a, there's a local charity called Hope Link that um, I support. I met with them and I've made donations to them. And I just was a sponsor of the fundraiser that they just had last Friday. Um, and they, they serve the homeless community. That's what they're all about. And they, they told me, which I didn't know, that without a facility in Henderson to help the homeless, there's not really much that the city can do. Um, so I mean, I guess first of all, I'm in favor of making a, a group like Hope Link more visible and encouraging support for the private efforts that exist. But I also think that there, there has to be some community support, some city support for actually creating an infrastructure to serve that community because it's going to be growing. I absolutely agree. And when people can't afford a place to live, I don't know what you do. So I recognize that it's a problem. I think the city has a role to play that it has not been playing. And I also think that, that, that the very good people at places like Hope Link need to be supported and encouraged. But I, 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 I can see it coming just like you can.
Okay. Well, great. Uh, we're at about our hours. Uh, man, that time went fast. I guess.
I believe it's five o'clock.
Yeah. Uh, so I thank you for, you know, if this is part one, we're gonna, obviously, I'm gonna talk to you, Jermaine, because uh, we really want to um, in this part, engage black Henderson along with our counterparts in the Sp, Hispanic community and in the white community who are, who identify as nonpartisan, who identify that they don't like the directions of the parties. And they want a voice that specifically talks about the issues that helps all communities. So we thank you for coming on here and in our first gay, our, our first step of vetting you. Uh, we will, we look forward to creating relationships. Uh, whether we vet, whether we endorse you or not, we still in, in, we wanna create positive relations one way or the other.
I agree.
So I'm a, Jermaine, I'm gonna let you say something real quick and then Steve, I'm gonna let you take us home and tell us a little bit of why we need to consider endorsing uh, you for city council.
Oh, excuse me. So, um, yeah, I just wanna thank you for taking the time out to, you know, one, introduce yourself. Uh, let us know about some of the uh, main things that you are going to tackle. Um, should you be um, elected. And uh, I'm interested because you have a real estate background with having further conversation on how we can work together to provide some solutions for the city of Henderson, uh, for minorities. Um, and also just for us to further strengthen our voice in the city of Henderson with the independent black voters, with black Henderson. Um, you know, I have some, I have some ideas myself, but they only go so far without the right connection. So, um, I would definitely be interested in having, you know, further conversations with you, um, especially uh, on this platform and uh, in the future.
Yeah, I, I'd love to do that, Jermaine. Just let me know. Um, I mean, I, I, to, to take, to end this conversation, I can tell you that, that the only reason that I'm doing this is because I think I can, I can do good on the city council. Um, that, that's the only reason that I'm here. I've, I've kinda had my career. I don't need the, the resume. I don't need, you know, the, the only reason that I'm here is that I think I can serve the city that has been so good to me and to my family. So I think I've got the experience to make a difference. I think because of what I do, I have access to raising um, a lot of money. So I think I can be successful and I've been endorsed by, by the city council basically. So I, I think I have a good shot of, of, of being there. Um, and I'm about as nonpartisan as it gets. I'm about finding solutions. That's what I enjoy about my, my chosen career is that I can help find solutions and put puzzles together and hopefully solve problems for both sides of an equation. And that's what I hope to do on the city council. And again, I think what you're doing is so important because like I said when we started, I've been doing this for a year and a half. And this is the first, and part of the blame I accept because I have not reached out. I could have done that. But in all the groups that I've talked to and all the, you know, the meetings that I've been at, et cetera, et cetera. This is the first real input I've had from the black community. So I, I appreciate what you're doing uh, and I look forward to the next discussion.
Thank you. Again, this is the Independent Black Voters along with Black Henderson and we thank you because our vote is not free. And this year, we want candidates that understand what are the issues that the community wants, both our community and all communities? How do we create a better system of social justice, economic opportunity and e, e, economical um, equality, not just for our community, but for all. So we thank you again, Steve. We look forward to continue our vetting process with you. And uh, we're at our hour. I don't wanna go any further. And I'll look forward to uh, doing, having it's further discussions in the future.
Thanks. Thank you very much. I look forward to it.
Okay, thanks.
Bye bye.